Okay, I'm gonna call this special meeting of the board of county to order. It is Wednesday. This is April the ninth, twenty twenty five. It is nine thirty A M. We have a full house. Mr. Brad Town, Mr. Reese Sellers.
How's that?
I'm Elmar Thompson. We have five items on the agenda today. So everybody listen up. When I call your number, you come up, sit in here, come up here and sit with us. We give you the first word and let the assessor respond. We give you the last word. There's a presumption of fairness of what the assessor has done. And you have to overcome that by showing us what maybe it was incorrect. We are not concerned with your taxes. People think that their valuation makes their taxes go up. There's a fair market value. That's what we set. There's a taxable value, which is a totally different number, and that controls your taxes. That is not what we concern ourselves with here. We do not decide today while you're here. Our decision day is on Friday. And we will set the fair market value, which is what we think a willing buyer and seller would would pay for a transaction on your property. By May o, you will get our decision. So probably Saturday or Monday, we'll get telling you what our decision is. Okay, first item on the agenda is B O E number seventy nine. T M Future Ventures LLC, address forty five oh eight northwest thirty four residential. That one got those, sorry, seventy one seventy nine, not one. Item two, uh, B O E number sixty nine, J Shark, J Shank. Twenty six, twenty nine, Keats Place, residential number R one seventy eight eighty nine sixteen one one five. Have a seat. My notes indicate that the assessor began the valuation at two hundred and seventy six thousand five hundred and lowered it to two hundred and sixty five thousand, but you would like to have it be a hundred and ninety thousand. Okay, I have a, an April twenty twenty fourth sale for two hundred and fifty thousand. Last year, the valuation was a hundred and eighty four thousand, the year before, a hundred and seventy nine. Okay, tell us why you think your property is valued at a hundred and ninety rather than two hundred and sixty five.
Well, I don't know if you all received the form that I thought I would did. And I, in my conversation with the assessor, they spoke to, um, you know, lots of other houses in the area being priced out in this range, just given the market. And I understand that when the, when a sale occurs and ownership changes, uh, that's, that's kind of the only chance to raise, uh, values. And so I understand that, but I also, doing research, I found, I mean, at least ten other, um, houses. And I'm sure there's, there's many more lists still on where the sale price, uh, you have the sale price, but then the actual value that's set is like lower, or maybe even ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars lower. Um, and so I'm not exactly certain how our house got bumped by, you know, nearly a hundred and twenty percent increase, um, where other houses that were sold. And then a year or two later, after this process would have been exhausted, were, you know, still valued less than that.
You mean to bump from a hundred and eighty four to two hundred and sixty five?
Yeah.
Yes. But, but, but tell me why you think if you paid two hundred and fifty thousand a year ago, because we're now April, that you would, you would take, um, sixty thousand dollars off the value of it? That's like a fourth?
Yeah.
But why?
Well, I don't think that, I mean, we haven't made any material changes to the house. So I'm, I'm not sure why it jumped that much. I'm, I think I noted a hundred and ninety as like proposed.
Yes.
Um, I feel like that would be more in line with the way that the house was increasing in value versus just jumping that far.
Okay, did, am I correct? Did you pay it two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
That's correct.
You're not telling me why it's worth less than that now?
Sorry.
Why, why is it worth less? We're just barely a year.
Well, I was just going off of what it was based off before we bought it.
Oh, I see. Okay, I got you.
Yes. And I, I mean, that's, I mean.
The one eighty four to one nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, that would basically be my whole, I guess, confusion is I'm not sure how. I think that we overpaid for the house.
Sure.
I mean, people overpay for stuff all the time. And so that's, that's where my, I guess, question, I guess, would lie.
Okay, you'll hear from me, assessor.
All right, the subject is located off Northwest Britain and North May. As you stated already, uh, we did notice them for two hundred and seventy six thousand five hundred, and then we did lower it to two sixty five. The reason for the increase is because you bought it remodeled. Um, so it was significantly remodeled, um, prior to his purchase. So we have the listing up there. Um, you can pull it up. It has definitely been finished.
Is the garage converted?
It is, and that's something I was gonna bring up. Uh, so then the M L S states this house is actually fifteen hundred and eighty five square feet, fifteen sixty five. And we had it on for one thousand two hundred and forty. So that is gonna be updated for next year, uh, because it got missed whenever the M L S listing came to us. Um, so that was changed. It was what was called finished converted. It wasn't in the G L A, but it was converted. That is obviously G L A because it's completely bricked. It would take a lot of money to switch it back to a garage. So with that all being said, um, the comps that were provided to you guys were not the same comps that were provided to us. However, I'm more than okay with accepting it because I ran the comp reports and I have a copy for everyone here.
Of his?
Yeah, the ones he gave y'all. They were different than what was provided.
And you reran those?
Yep. So I had to do them in two different, um, because there was ten of them. So I put five on one. Everyone has one.
I noticed some.
Uh, there, there's two separate. Oh, there's two separate. Yep. Yeah, because there was ten total, um, I had to do five on one comp sheet and five on the others.
Okay.
Uh, one comp sheet supports a much higher value, and then the other comp sheet.
Then he wants or that you want?
That we had on. It actually supported the original two seventy six.
Okay.
The other comp, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can you explain to him the adjustments? Because I'm not sure if he understands.
Yes.
The valuation that you guys are putting on there and the comps here.
Yeah, sure can. So the biggest adjustment on the comps we ran and then the comps you provided, um, to the board. If you look at the effective year, that is the biggest adjustment on every single comp. Because yours was updated, it changes the effective year of the home. So even though they might have all been built around the same time, the remodel changes the effective year. So there's a major adjustment on that. Um, could you pull up the comp report?
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, what, what, what they do is, is they, the comps that they pulled, for instance, what he pulled and he gave you a copy of. They know when to look at the differences between your property and the comparable properties, and they make adjustments for that. It's either up or down if it's more square footage, or as he said, the age of the property and those types of things. So that's what he's referring to right now are the adjustments. Because I noticed that you provided the sales price, but we can't do a comparison against the sales price. We have to do it against the adjusted value, so that we're comparing apples to apples.
Okay, I, I don't wanna disagree, but I do have a question about that. Um, I thought that in our conversation, he was, uh, mentioning that the sales price was something that they looked at determining.
And it is. Um, with all this being said, if, if we were to lower it, I'm okay with going to two fifty. That's what he paid. Two hundred and fifty thousand, I'm more than okay with that. But anything lower than that, I don't see. Could you pull up the comp report? Uh, do you mind if I go up and show them the line? So this line right here, uh, is the effective age line. So the comps that were originally ran in the report, there are minimal adjustments compared to what I ran, um, the, the new comps that were provided. Uh, they're about thirty, forty percent adjustment on the effective age because they're older homes. So the homes that we originally ran have been updated, just like the subject. So the costs that we ran were really, really good. Um, definitely you can see that why we lowered it to two sixty five, but again, I'm okay with going to two fifty what he paid. But that's really all I have. Unless y'all have other questions, something else I need to explain?
I've said what I needed to say.
Do you have a problem with the two fifty?
Uh, no, I guess that would be fair. It's absolutely paid for it.
Okay, you wanna, do I have a motion to set the fair market value?
Yep. On the B O E sixty nine, I moved to set the fair market value at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Mr. Town?
Yes.
Miss?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Back. No, that's yours.
All right, the next item on the agenda is B O E number seventy four, which is twenty three oh seven Northwest fifty nine. You wanna pronounce your last name for me?
LeBar.
LeBar.
And Renadea. I mean, Jill.
Okay, Jill do. Okay. Um, I, it looks like the assessor. I'm not sure about this. Did you begin at one million twenty five thousand seven hundred and forty and you lowered it to one million fifty five thousand five hundred?
Yeah, the, we noticed them for one million fifty five thousand five hundred, lowered to one million twenty five thousand seven forty.
Okay, and last year it was nine hundred and twenty five, five of the year before, one million thirty nine five. You want, you want us to set the value at five hundred thousand?
We have, uh, been canceled by all of our insurance. We're now in, uh, zone A E flood zone. Uh, and, uh.
So wait, is it five hundred thousand you want us to set it at?
I, I'm just going off of the lot values.
I see.
We build houses. And so I'm just, um, it's a great lot, and it would certainly get a, uh, you know, but unfortunately, all the houses on that picture are at the bottom of the hill, and we're all zoned A E. And everybody else lives up the hill, left and right.
Is, is this where forty four and, uh, the stop light at forty four and Reston, I mean, it's my mall, yeah?
This is across from the bar.
Oh, that one?
The recent.
Where the creek comes through?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I need to reach the great style in that.
And so we had to spend eight hundred and seventy nine dollars on an elevation report to make our insurance company happy. And, uh, they came back and said, you know, FEMA dot gov, you're, you're at eleven fifty one and we need you to be at eleven fifty three.
Did you show that what you have in your hand? Tell me. Okay. That was the other thing I meant to tell you guys is because we're an appeals body. You can't give us something they didn't have unless they don't care if you give it to us now, but you did it. Okay.
And we also took pictures. There was a new build in our, in our neighborhood.
Okay.
And, and that's why they said we build houses.
Yeah.
And they're eight feet higher than us. I went over and even took the, uh, elevations of their new build versus ours.
Okay.
And, uh, I have it for you if you want. They're at eleven fifty nine, we're at eleven fifty one. Eleven fifty one kills the whole deal. So, uh, because now anybody, we can, for this point forward on the Oklahoma disclosure statement, we have to say that we know that it is in flood zone A E, not flood zone B, C, D, or E, but A E is, is the death now. Forever, and that property. Now, the reason I did an all, uh, elevation of my neighbor that raised it to eleven fifty nine, and I even took pictures for you guys to see. Uh, he's fine. He's got eight more feet, uh, on the new build that he can withstand anything. And, uh, that's what needed to happen, needs to happen.
Are you saying the new, the new build is a grade or the house is built as new?
The house is built as new.
Okay.
And they, and they've obviously, when you look at the pictures, you can see we're here and they're there, and they, they knew what they. And, uh.
Can I see that picture?
Sure.
Because I'm, I'm not even with this neighbor.
Yeah, and it's a great neighbor, but don't get, it's just that if you live on the ditch, you kind of, a different. I, we were shocked when pure insurance calls us.
Thank you. Oh, this is your existing property.
Yeah, these are the elevations of, yeah, all kind of, you know, that you can see what he did to preclude any kind of flood, floods.
Was it just an error in the G I S information at some point? Or just they, or the original builder just built it in a floodplain?
Oh, in nineteen seventy, you know, there's been so much more development. The, the golf courses expanded. We're, we're, we're the, we're the receiving end of a golf course. Uh, and there's about three of us there.
So it could have not been in a floodplain originally and because of the.
Could have.
Build upstream.
Yeah, literally, the guy that built, uh, the new build, uh, his property line is the ditch that takes the water. So he, uh, you know, it was carved out of his original lot.
What street is that new build on?
Fifty ninth. It's just two houses.
Let's do this again. We're gonna go up to Penn, and then what are we gonna do? Where's, where's my last?
You gotta turn left on fifty ninth street in front of the cemetery.
Oh, the cemetery.
Turn west.
I lived on sixty first. Oh, you did.
We have, we have a house on sixty first. It's our Airbnb.
Oh, I bet it's the one right across the street. I know exactly which one it is.
No problem. Yeah, so I mean, it's.
Twenty one hundred block.
Twenty one oh five.
Yeah, we're twenty one oh eight.
Okay, we're twenty one oh five, and that's, uh.
You may be the one who has the nice, always has the good. I'm Molly, I have the else house. I always comment on that.
So, yeah, great neighborhood.
Now, when did you buy this?
Twenty seventeen.
Well, you've been there a while. So you were there when, uh, valuation went from a million down to nine twenty five?
Yeah, we were there when it was valuation was even less than that.
Okay.
So, um.
Okay, let me hear from you, assessor.
All right. Uh, as stated, twenty three oh seven and Northwest fifty nine is Northwest, uh, located off Northwest sixty third and Penn. The square footage of the home is four thousand two hundred and ninety four square feet. Uh, we did not have that at the formal. I don't know if that just didn't get to us, but.
Well, I didn't have pictures, but I have the, uh, reports on the element, uh, from.
Okay, so that's just the header. That's just, okay, okay.
You, you, you had the written report.
Yeah, I had this. I, I was making sure that that was, uh, something.
Okay.
What we did in the initial informal, we lowered the land value only because it is in the floodplain. We added, um, a negative twenty percent adjustment. One of our land guys looked at it, saw the floodplain. So the land value changed from a hundred and forty eight thousand eight oh three to a hundred and nineteen thousand forty three. It did not affect the building value. It only affected the land value. Whenever we ran the comps, it supported that. The comps that were ran, I can see that there would be a little bit of an issue because of age. So I reran comps with closer in age, and I can support their original value. I won't go into detail like, uh, but the median, this is a four comp report. This is what I did. This is different than what was done. The median is one million, one hundred and sixty two thousand, seven hundred and forty two dollars. And the mean was one million, one hundred and sixty seven thousand, three hundred and thirty eight dollars. These are closer in age, closer in size. Uh, that is why I went ahead and reran it to make sure we were in line. But the only lowering was because, on the land value because of the floodplain issue. So we are accounting for it. It is on there. So the land value is being valued less. And based on just that alone, that's what we lowered. Everything else we did not.
Can, can you pull up the map with the original columns so we can see where they are in relationship? Are any of your columns in the floodplain?
That, that's.
All right, go to the.
That's the original.
You looked up.
Yeah.
The floodplain map that was in the document.
And I did bring pictures of the book. Yeah, we have it.
And Karen, while you're looking for that, I also wanna clarify the sales, because I showed a September twenty one sale, three hundred and four thousand?
Uh, that was a partial interest sale on the subject. That's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was a partial interest sale, so it's not deemed a arm's length transaction. Um, okay, so. But on the comps I ran, and it looks like the comps that were ran, they were not. Uh, we didn't have anything that did sell in the floodplain, so unfortunately, I can't compare that to them. So that's.
Where's the subject house?
Subject's gonna be right where that dot is. But the houses right there that are in the floodplain, um, none of those sold. So we don't have, we unfortunately don't have anything to go off of right there in the flood. But again, but the, we actually gave this one to one of the land guys who specifically deals with this stuff. And agreed with the floodplain that it did need to be lowered because the, how the land was valued by itself, it definitely was selling for less in the floodplain. So that's why the adjustment was made on the land.
Why would there not be, because being in a floodplain would affect the value of the house. Why would there not be any adjustment on that, on the building and just only the land?
That's always how we valued it, is when the, when they're in a floodplain, it's only been in the land. And that's across the board. We never valued the, the home differently, the actual build itself. But yeah, I do see what you're saying.
Does insurability affect your valuation at all?
No.
No.
Can, can I say something? The insurability affects anybody that, well, she's eight years younger than me. She's the one that had, sells this house. Anybody that buys that the mortgage would require a flood insurance policy. Okay, from this date forward, okay. And so now we have a buyer that's gotta buy regular insurance plus what? We had one bid for seven thousand, seven hundred dollars a year for flood insurance, which only gets you two hun, as you would know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of coverage. Okay, so that's the impairment effect I'm seeking is that from this day forward, she and I on an Oklahoma disclosure statement, have to check where flood zone A E or so until it's rectified.
Do you know whether any of the other houses that he showed up there in a flood zone uh, would be sort of like your neighbors? Do you know if any of them have their insurance canceled?
Uh, they have not, not been. One, one guy's a veteran and he has the U S A. Nobody's. So he's, 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 he has his, uh, his there. And what, like I said, this only happens when it comes to sale. I mean, when, when we build houses, we, we don't touch anything in floods. Life's too short to have to deal with that.
Have you ever, have you ever had this property flood where you had remediate?
Not, uh, and I, since then, we have built French drains, we put new gutters on, and we built a sump pump at the back of a golf course just to try to, to hold. Now, my neighbor to the west says that he, that he has a wall and a pickleball court out there. It's gotten all the way over it, and his, well, he told me, he's been there long, long time. And I told him that he's now at a flood, so.
You said your insurance canceled on you. Were you able to get new insurance?
Still looking.
You don't have any insurance on it right now.
Oh, no, our, our insurance, well, they will not renew. So I've been. Pure, and I like Pure because we have some other properties in some other places, and Pure's a, a very quality, uh, insurance, but, uh.
But you haven't found a replacement policy?
We're working on finding a replacement policy. Had, had a lead from her telling me she was working on it, and let you know of not just over here stranded, but.
I was just curious if you had any close for flood insurance?
Yeah, I had. One was, uh, seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. For the flood insurance for two hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, our home insurance, I think, is around five or six, or, you know, for it to be rebuilt at four thousand square feet.
Their place been by you, yeah.
But, uh, so. That's the insurance people right there telling me that we're gonna do the best we can, but. And unfortunately, the guy to the west of us that's on the edge, he built the house and built it up high, and everybody, he goes, okay, that's the fix. So he's kind of shown everybody the ice recipe to mitigate this, uh.
It's like, like you're two feet lower?
I'm eight feet lower. He's eleven fifty nine, his brought the one, I'm eleven fifty one. And I think the, the zone people, the, the people wanted eleven, wanted me to be at least eleven fifty three.
Was that a vacant lot that the new house got built on, or it, it was a.
They tore it.
Tear down.
They tore it. They tore it down. And then they, uh, built it accordingly. And it was a very reputable builder here, uh, Oklahoma City, so he knew what he was doing. What's the name of the cat?
Cumbers?
Cumbers.
Oh.
So he's kind of set the standard for this predicament.
Got anything else, Brett? Assessor?
I'm good.
Okay, we're gonna close the hearing on, uh, on this case, and we will make our decision on Friday. And notify you by mail.
Michelle, thank you.
Okay, our next one is B O E number seventy five, one six zero zero four Thistle Terrace. B O E, I mean, um, resident number two eighteen seventy five fourteen forty. I've got that, um, there was a sale, um, in twenty three on this property for three hundred and twenty nine thousand. The assessor has this at five hundred and ninety three five, and you would like to have it set at five hundred and twenty five thousand. Okay?
It did show that three twenty nine wasn't like a partial sale. There was another sale in August of twenty three for five twenty five is what I pulled from the website.
When did you buy this property?
Uh, I closed on this property in August of twenty twenty.
Okay.
Five twenty five, yes. Five twenty-five, yes.
So you want no increase in the value of your property in two years?
My justification is that I bought it in twenty-twenty-three and in twenty-twenty-four, I also refinanced. And they had an assessor come out and look at my house in order for me to get the refinancing. And that was reassessed again at five twenty-five.
You mean appraised?
Or, uh yes, appraised at five twenty-five. I also wanted to say for this uh neighborhood, everything in the neighborhood is newly built. And so each one of these houses are built at cost and the houses that have been used. Are the areas that are outside um and are a different floor plan with the exception of just one. That was used for a comparable uh price for the assessment. And so those house plans are cost, more costly and to build. In addition, since they're sitting on the outside uh area of the neighborhood. The builder ha- um charges a twenty, at least a twenty thousand dollar. Um so anything outside of that area has, they charge a twenty, roughly twenty thousand dollar land premium. And on top of that, if there's a base cost from the floor plan. Um and if they, if the buyer goes in and they decide they want to upgrade anything inside the house, it's more costly. So. Those are my arguments, kind of just justifying that maybe the costs um that are being used. So stuff like house is a little bit inflated.
And you did provide that appraisal during the informal.
I provided the appraisal and also the settlement summary as well from when I initially closed on the house. And around that time, most of the houses that are the same floor plan is closing around that price as well.
Okay, we hear from the assessor.
Yeah, it's northwest one hundred and sixty-fourth in Portland. We're trying to get it up. It's. It doesn't come up because it is a newer house, so. Anyway, um with that being said, the square footage on this property is three thousand one hundred and eighty-five square feet. Uh we did use a six comp report, five cells in twenty-four, then one cell in twenty-three. Uh median comes in at six oh six two fifty-nine and mean is six oh two seven sixty-eight. Comp, I mean, the adjustment wise, they're very minimal on the adjustments. Um I did not see anything wrong. Uh I mean, they're thirty feet, I think was the biggest difference on all of these, so. We are comparing really well in square footages. As she stated, these are newer homes, so they're all being, or she is being compared to the newer homes as well. We have to go off of what they sold for and then like I stated, very minimal adjustments on all of these comps.
Cause the effective ages are really not.
Yeah, cause they're all new builds. I mean, hers is two years, several of the comps are two years, some are one. Very minimal adjustments on the age there.
Did you say that you can't look at the neighborhood before? Is that the one that you're having?
Oh, I couldn't pull up the map.
Can you pull up the map, your comp, your comp map?
Yeah.
So they're all in low note, none of them are in Rose Creek, correct? Just the adjacent neighborhood.
Correct, yes. All of them are in, in this area uh that we're talking about. I believe, I don't wanna misspeak.
Can you go and uh pull up the neighborhood part of this? Just the comps, just go up one? I don't remember if we have a neighborhood adjustment.
And those, yeah, so we are all in, all, every comp is in the neighborhood.
Do you agree with her about the periphery of being sold at a premium on the land?
This is the first time I knew about it. I don't know i- if that is something that there's, they're doing. It's in the, if it's in the purchase price, that's what we have to go off of. And they don't send a breakdown, so we have to go off of what dog stamps are filed. So if that twenty thousand is something they're including in the purchase, we won't have any idea. Um about that unfortunately, so. With, with what we have based on the sale prices and very close in square footages and age. This, this is easily supported on, on our end.
Can you go back to that neighborhood map and show me where the subject property is and see it?
Subject's gonna be the top right, if it's the blue one. Yes.
Okay, so out of all the six comps that were used, if you look at all the pictures. The only one that is the same floor plan as to mine is the one that is comp number six. And even that one, I think it closed at.
It's six and booting on S, S is the subject. Oh, six, I see it, I see it. It's lower right.
Six is the only one that is um matching to my floor plan. And that was at the time they purchased it, which was in October of twenty-twenty-three. Um they bought it for fifty-five sixty-four. And so. I bought it at five twenty-five, I, in two years, don't think it's justifiable. But if I sell this house, I will be able to get the assessed value that you are providing.
Um you keep saying lower plan, but is the square footage about the same?
It is exactly the same. And so on. Well, not exactly, but it's like thirty-five or thirty-one something.
It's five B.
So Karen, were any of the comps that were on her appraisal included in your comps? Did you do a comparison between her comps and yours from the appraisal?
I did not. Uh well, you go about it.
Um if the comps that were on her appraisal, have to be any of the comps that he used?
I don't believe so.
What was the year of the sale on those comps?
I think they were all twenty-three.
Twenty-three, so twenty-four appraisal.
From what I saw, it looked like a twenty-three appraisal.
No, there was one that said it was twenty-three and then there was another one that said it was twenty-four because I looked at it.
There's three of them that are from twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, yeah, cause it was definitely a twenty-four appraisal. So I, I looked at it. There, there was two of them if I recall. One was dated twenty-three and one was dated twenty-one.
Would be the year she bought it.
When she bought it and then the second one was twenty-four.
Yeah, I'll save this.
It looks like this sixteen one hundred per million drive, our comparable number five.
Comp five.
Yeah, is the same as from the. The appraisal.
All those refinance loans or appraisals, they don't make adjustments. They just use raw sale data. That's the difference. So if there is a, a change based or percentage that needs to be done, they typically don't, and if they do, very minimal. At least all the ones I've ever seen, which is a lot.
Your appraisal for your refinance came in at five twenty-five.
And even just like online from the website, the builder is building currently, um. They are building some that are under construction and it's about thirty-five hundred or so square feet.
Bigger than yours.
Bigger than mine. And I'm sorry, not thirty-five. And there's one that they're building right now, thirty-six twenty-five square foot. Um it's on northwest one fifty-eighth street and there was some that one for six twenty-six. And so if you take that into consideration, which is square footage and multiply it by my own square footage, now it would be five forty-four thousand.
Okay, unfortunately, we have to cut anything that we consider at December thirty-first. So if you've got a house that's not yet completed, we can't consider it cause it's in twenty-five. So we have to stop it December twenty-four. Okay, so.
They do show the valuation for last year was five ninety-one five. You didn't dispute.
Yes, I did dispute because um I didn't know about the timeline of the dispute. Um so I was too late to dispute.
Okay, you got anything else?
I don't, unless you have other questions.
Okay, okay, so we will make our decision on Friday and we'll notify you by mail. Thank you so much. Okay, well, we're gonna close the hearing on BOE number seventy-five and open the hearing on BOE number seventy-six. Which is fifty-nine oh five Gaelic Glen Drive, resident number one zero zero three twenty-three zero four zero. I show the assessor. Has this at three hundred and thirty-five. This year was three forty-seven five and the year before that, three thirty-two. And um if, if it's you, that this sale was in May of twenty-four for two hundred and seventy thousand. And you want it to hold present value at two hundred and seventy thousand. Okay, and basically, as you say, there should be no increase.
Yeah, I mean, it's the fair market value of the asset. It was uh, which is, the purchase price is the fair market value of that, in my opinion. And the most reliable figures you use, right? Um it was an arms length transaction. And uh have no relation to this, this man, um owned it. I mean, obviously, it was assessed higher and whatever the value was before, I mean, that's great, like it was higher before, but you know, the property actually sold in transit. So um I provided a copy of the closing statement to show there's no Fugazi stuff there, um. Which I think was fair and um the property itself, the condition of the asset is older, the guy is a hoarder. Uh it's a mess. I overpaid for it. Uh in my opinion.
You think even if.
I started to do it, it just, everything is so expensive right now. Um it's just expensive, so.
It's gonna be expensive. I hear from the assessor.
Uh the property is located off in northwest one hundred and twenty-sixth and North MacArthur. This is a two duplexes on one account, so it's two, it could be two different tenants um in each one. So that's why this value, or the square footage is coming in three thousand six ninety. It's not just one house, it's duplexes, two duplexes on one account.
So this, this valuation is for both sides?
Yes, that's correct.
You live there?
No, we don't.
It will be. On the sale part, we have no way of verifying the sale. So there's not an MLS listing. Uh we sent two letters and never received a response on any of those. Um why it was bought at two seventy and we can't find an MLS listing anywhere at all. So that is why we are not looking at the sale as an arms length transaction, because we, we can't verify it. We have no way of doing it. And we always send out letters because maybe, maybe it is the value, but we don't know if there was issues with the sale, like. Maybe it was distressed. Uh you mentioned it was uh hoarded. We don't know. We don't know any of that stuff. Uh it was dog stamps on the two seventy. And that's what we have, but we can't verify it. We can't figure out how we know, how we knew it was on the market. Uh because it's not available to us at all. Um which is a red flag for us. Um we did lower it in the initial appeal, so we had it on for three fifty-five, five hundred. Lowered it to three hundred and thirty-five thousand. The comp report, this is a tricky one. So we had three sales, but only one of the sales actually had two units on it. So that's, and there's not anything else. That's the hard part about this.
Which one was that?
Uh the, the one that has both the, on it is uh comp number two. Uh and that's be, you can tell on the square footage part. This one is two thousand nine hundred and thirty square feet. The other two are just one individual unit. Uh comp one and comp three are the individual units.
And their proximity?
Uh they're right.
So this is just north of Putnam City North High School?
Yeah, it's not your career, it's PC schools.
Yeah, but, cause I, well, I live down there, so. But one, one twenty-six is just south of, so it's between a hundred and twenty-six.
There's an apartment complex called the Gables.
Yeah, but I mean literally down the street from PC.
Uh but that, that's really all I have. The, I know we can't really just look at one, but the comp two, I mean, it's sold. It's sold for two seventy-five before any adjustments are made to it and it's smaller than the subject. So after we make those adjustments. Yes. Now, if you look at comp one and comp three, it's making a massive adjustments because it has to account for a second duplex. Again, that's the only comps we have whatsoever in this area on these duplexes. And very few of them have both units on one parcel. So it's very hard to find comps. I don't, what they, I mean, the, having the closing documents does help, but again, it didn't tell us. How you knew about this.
Were there any sales prior to that May of twenty-four sale?
Of duplexes?
At this property, at the subject property.
The only thing was uh it was transferred to twenty-one uh. Yeah, it's okay. Oh, is, is it not gonna get it? It's supposed to be right there. You can't scroll down.
Oh, I almost just got in the website. It's in that middle section.
You want the number?
Yeah, just looks like it was in names and trust.
Transferred, so whoever this, whoever you bought it from has had it since at least ninety-one.
Uh go ahead and click.
Is there another page? I mean, at this point, it's moved that far out, but.
Yeah, so.
Nineteen eighty-nine.
Right, yeah, so I don't even have anything to go on this subject itself.
Anything else? Give you the last word.
I think the two comps, they're both right on the, the individual ones. Obviously, people live there. Um comp two, I don't know the condition of that one.
You have a, a rental value in mind?
The rents are not gonna be as high as I need. I, I, I don't have a rental value um once it's done.
Okay, so each one of them is about. Eighteen hundred square feet?
Correct. They're big units, they're bigger. Which obviously the price per square foot should be come down, right? If it's smaller, you're higher price per square footage. Larger, this starts to tail off um on a price per square foot basis. The roof, I added the roof. I mean, I still have, like, I came out of pocket on the roof for that. So the value that I paid is also including a fifteen-year-old roof on top of that. I believe it's fair. Um I paid two seventy for it. Um I think I overpaid for it. It was an arms length transaction. I attached a closing statement to show it. I, I, I don't know if you guys got that. I'm not asking for anything. Can I ask a question? How, how did you know that it was for sale? I guess that's. My mom is a realtor.
Okay, how did she know? Cause there's not an MLS listing. That's, that's our concern. That's why we can't look at the sale.
Yeah, that's, that's, she, she had word that this guy was wanting to sell and negotiated a deal. He wanted anywhere between two hundred and forty and two hundred and eighty thousand. And I said, I'll do it at two, I offered him two sixty-five and he took two seven. That's where he split the difference. And it was an all cash transaction, so I mean, I don't know if that means anything.
Okay, we've heard me say many times today, we will decide on Friday and we'll notify you about it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE number seventy-seven. And that's the last item on our agenda, so we, we will see you guys Friday and then you said next week is our meeting party?
Monday, Thursday. Monday.
Nine o'clock, so.
We have text.
Oh, are you under, are you still under Christmas?
No, I'm not.
Are we closest, maybe?
No, not yet. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?